Good evening, everyone. It's Tuesday, December 10, 2013, and this is the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 26, 2013 regular meeting?
Please move.
I'm Mark, seconded by Lisa. Any adjustments to those minutes? Okay. No one's in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We now have an opportunity for public comment. If you'd like to, I think you know our protocol.
Hi. Good evening. Jen, who's in Rhinebeck, New York. I don't know if we're going to make it to the second public comment. I guess we'll be kind of all together. So, the comment I wanted to make was, I was looking at the communication report. Very nice. Thank you very much. Lovely. And there was one comment I wanted to make that I thought was really interesting that the communications committee was looking at taking the data, collecting it, and analyzing it based on the exit interviews of families who were leaving the district. And I just want to say I wholeheartedly support that. I think it's important. There's always room for improvement. What I wanted to propose was that perhaps you might consider offering that to parents who are going to keep their children in the district as well, and lending their voice, perhaps, for some level of feedback as well. And that's all I wanted to say. Happy New Year. Happy and healthy to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Very good. Thank you. And, of course, we'll be discussing the communications in a few years. So, thank you. Any other members of the public like to comment? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to reports. And I think everyone at the table knows that we're working off of the agenda that's at our table. And the first reports are principals' reports. So, let you gentlemen take your way.
Evening, all. So, a few things happening at Chancellor. Today, in fact, is actually our snow day date for this. We did, as we do every year, the third grade teamwork camps with a team partnership with PTSO. So, like I said, it occurred today. We utilized the gym to create several stations that where students participate in activities like brainstorming, collaborative teamwork activities, things like that. There's quite a few stations around the gym. And one of the things we tried to do, we started it last year, was kind of actually started to take kids from different classes and put them together. And so, it's the whole third grade, if they're not participating, just the kids in their class. So, it's always a great opportunity, a couple of hours where they start early in the morning. And we work in July, and there's a whole bunch of, like I said, activities. PTSO comes and volunteers their time, and teachers volunteer their time, and we all work together. And it's just a great thing. I always get an opportunity to walk around and take a look at that. So, teamwork camps was today. One thing I kind of promised I would do each board, each board meeting, each principal's report this year, whenever applicable, is to kind of give you an update on the workshop, the grant we did with the Rhinebeck Science Foundation and Rick Campbell. And him and I presented to the RSF donors party last week to kind of give an overview of what we've been doing, and kind of discuss not only what we're doing, but also the possibility of kind of moving forward, wrapping up this first kind of grand cycle. And I know there were one or two people here that were at that get-together this past week. So, they may have heard this, but I really, I wanted to share something with you. It's just really my part of feedback to what we've been doing with Rick from Bar College and my teachers. It's an email from a group of teachers to Rick, a little late in the process, just kind of explaining their thinking. And I just think it's really telling. So, if you heard it already the other night, I apologize, but certainly I wanted to share with you. So, this kind of epitomizes what they're working on and how it gets the teachers to think. Dear Rick, this project has afforded us opportunity to have more time to collaborate with first grade colleagues and discuss how we think about thinking. One of the things the three of us have noticed when working with first graders is that they have to be guided and be able to physically show us with concrete materials in order to tell us about what they are thinking. These activities are especially helpful when exploring new abstract concepts as well as demonstrating skill application. For example, after introducing a lesson on even odd numbers in the everyday math program, children were asked the question, "How do you know if a number is even or odd?" It was amazing to watch the process unfold as the students shared their ideas using manipulators and then wrote about their findings. Again, talking about first graders. In going forward, this is really telling, "In going forward, one of the ideas we would like to develop is an explicit skill set for engaging children in the process of metacognition as it relates to math and science. Thank you, Rick, for your direction." So, I just really thought that that was something just in the email stream. That was CC to me, as is normal through this process, as Rick and I work with the teachers to set up, you know, visitations, classroom visitations, things like that, and roles for upcoming meetings. And I just thought that was a really wonderful way of kind of pinpointing what it is they're doing. So, we're going to meet sometime next week to hopefully talk about the possibility of moving forward with a second kind of session of this, I think, very effective series of workshops where my teachers are participating here. In addition, I reported that it was coming back on its way. Well, as it turns out, Dr. Ronan, the Scientist in Residence Program, wrapped up back in October. In addition to everything he normally does in the artifacts, the kids get to really get hands-on application and have conversations about what he brings from NASA and space travel, things like that. You may remember, I kind of mentioned something called AstroTec. And what those are is it's kind of an above and beyond the actual program or the presentations and activities that the kids work with. And it provides fourth and fifth grade as the opportunity to come into research projects over that meeting as well. They take their own time to do it. It's amazing. Some of them even get permission to stay a little bit later and work on it after school and get picked up a little bit later. And I've worked with them myself. This year, we had 15 students that did that. And once again, CLS will be recognized in the NASA archives in Houston, and we were able, for the third time, to open up K through 5. So, a really good program that we look forward to. November 8, as promised, the Dutchess County Dental Society players came and presented Happy Tooth to K-2. It was very well received. The kids loved it. Yeah, it was about a 40-minute presentation that I'm definitely interested in possibly bringing them back again next year. I always get laughs when I mention the title. But I just wanted to mention, all students left on the toothbrush as a gift.
Excellent.
Yeah. A local dentist really put on a funny show for the kids. They really enjoyed it. Hands Helping Hands, once again, continuing as we do every year around this time, Miss Rizolo's third grade class, collecting new mittens, gloves, scarves, heavy socks, and knit hats that will go to the Astro Hunt for Children next week. And it is amazing, every, it's my fifth year, kind of seeing that, and I have to, actually. And I have to tell you, it is amazing how many people look for, you know, that event and knit things specifically for, not only people in my building, but community members that come in and ask about it. And so, I don't have a final number because we're still collecting through the end of this. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, peer mediation will be up and running when we get back in January. The 10 fifth graders, who, by the way, are nominated by their own peers. Teachers spend about a week in fifth grade, working with the kids during morning meeting and having conversations about who they think would, you know, bring the best kind of traits to those positions, I guess. And they're nominated by their own peers, and we do kind of, I don't think I've ever told you this before, we do a celebration during recess when we finally, I get all the fifth graders after the fourth graders go, and we get them in the pavilion, and I kind of announce the names and thank everyone for helping us. So, those 10 fifth graders are going to, we're going to start work when we get back. Morgan and I are going to be meeting next week to talk about the referral process, and we are going to open that actually up. In the past, it's only been three, four, five. This year, we're going to open it up for all the other grades in the building. One of the rationales, by the way, for that was the idea that, you know, some of the, it would be good for really kindergartners, first graders, second graders to see fifth graders kind of working with me and Morgan and their teachers to kind of do some conflict resolution, problem solve. So, that was the rationale for opening up the school live. Very fast, right now, our Common Language for All, we're focusing on the three themes so far that we've discussed. We're just wrapping up those conversations about responsibility, courtesy, and respect. And when we come back in January, we'll start talking about compassion. I want to thank the Rotary Club and the Rotary Dictionary Project. I think it's 12 or 13 years in with the third graders. It happened on November 25th. We discussed things like new words like earworm and googol. That's earworm, yeah. And I just wanted to, I did want to take a moment before I get to some of the upcoming events to thank PTSO for the Giving Trees Initiative. I think this is probably, I don't know, it's every year I've been there. And it's just a great way for community teachers to kind of come together and work on things that can help support destruction. So, three kind of things coming up. Winter concerts on December 12th this week, grade four at 6:30, grade five at 7:30, and the in-school concert will be at 1:45 for staff and students. And then two upcoming initiatives/events. The first, Science Night Out with collaboration with the RSF and Bar College. We're going to be setting it up January 9th. It's a Thursday, a snow day, but a Friday. A lot of hands-on activities, science activities for students. I started to get a little bit of feedback from staff also about what they're working on, that maybe some of those activities could be, you know, presented on that evening. But just a taste of some of the things, and I'll give a full report next time I see you. But a few of the activities, like make your own lava lamp, safe recycle lava lamp, follow the termites. I love this experiment where worker termites have the tendency to follow lines when drawn on a page, and the students have an opportunity to work together and figure out why. He'll be in town. One other thing, we also, another activity, working with a group of robots to create art. So, that's just a taste. There's a few other things. We're narrowing down the final very soon. So, that's coming up. And finally, just one last thing I wanted to mention was, I'm working with Young Rhinebeck and a representative from Young Rhinebeck to create the LLL Children's Foreign Culture and Language Program. That's something that they're creating on their own, and we're doing a pilot, titled Spanish Language and Culture After School Program. That chance was going to start in January, and primarily it's to immerse children in culture and language-driven activities. In this case, we're going to begin, obviously, with Hispanic culture and Spanish language. And primarily, we create interactive activities with four goals in mind. The goals are Spanish language basic acquisition and use, recognition of language patterns, cross-cultural youth connections, where we hope to get some Skyping going on and things like that for students, and certainly Hispanic culture education are the four kind of goals of that program. It's in the infant stages. We'll all go further than that because we do a 10-day starting, I think, this second week we get back. But it'll be announced as a school program a couple nights a week, and we'll see how it goes. I'll finish up in March. And with that.
Great. Anyone have any questions?
Sounds fantastic, Brett. Thank you so much.
Oh, you do? Okay.
So, I have two questions. One is just in terms of the budget, which we're going to be talking about later today. A couple of meetings ago, we had accepted some generous grants for field trips at Chancellor. And we were discussing whether Chancellor had enough money in the budget for field trips this year. But last year, we increased it from 3,000 to 4,000. Did we use up all of that money this year? Is there desire for more?
It will be by the end of the school year, sure. And primarily, what we've done with that is, again, with partnerships like PTSO usually funds one field trip per grade, the Arts and Ed, the Community Foundation, those are a few areas we've gone into to kind of get grant monies. And a lot of those organizations or those groups don't pay for transportation. So, in addition to the one field trip I try to pay for, I also offer some extra monies for field trips. You know, once or twice, when we've had those numbers, you know, because when I first came here, it was a lot bigger, a lot larger budget line. Primarily, you know, I might, you know, take a couple of hundred from another, you know, transfer from another COVID. But for the most part, we kind of know we're going to spend that on before we do. And we've been able to secure two, sometimes three, educational field trips per grade. Trying to secure a little bit more on the lower grades, there's not as a necessity in some of the upper grades for it. But yeah, we historically clean that line out of mouth.
And the second question will be no surprise to you because I ask it every year. Will Chancellor be holding a science fair this year?
It's interesting. I just talked to one of the staff members who's usually interested in doing that, and I know she is a possible man fair as well. So, we just started talking.
Great. Good work. It's a hairboard.
Is this appropriate time to ask about the wish list? What do you want to do?
I don't know. What do you want to do?
So, if we have the time?
Sure. Okay. Then they can leave. We don't have to wait around.
Yeah. We're trying to get to that. So, on your potential programs list, you've got an increase in the STEM teacher position so that we could have a full-time STEM teacher. And I'm wondering what your vision for that is? What are we looking at for the science lab?
Sure. The idea is actually, I met with Brian McDonald a few years ago, a person I had a few months ago, and since then, he's talked to me a couple of times about, they just released the K-5 module that needs to be in the modules he's teaching in middle school or high school and I agree. And that's kind of become the basis for it, for the idea of what that might look like. So, that's what we're kind of working on. You know, it is something that I certainly know enough about myself and my expertise. I'm a big literacy person, but I think science and technology, I should use as many resources and help. So, Mark Krebs and I have talked about it a few times, like I said, with Brian McDonald and to believe, I'm using those modules as kind of the baseline. You know, if I could for a moment, you know, there's a lot of reasons why I'd like to do that, and we probably all share many of those same reasons. You know, I want it to be, you know, obviously, the concept of it being science-based and all of that stuff, but you know, the technology piece is very huge. I'm glad we have Steve on board now to kind of help with that transition as well. I haven't brought him in yet because we haven't really had time to sit down and talk. But he's another resource that I think is going to help me kind of figure that out. So, that's going to be a big aspect of it. And again, kind of looking at those K-5 modules, that's given some guidance. But there are, you know, going back to some of the goals, a big goal for me also is to really get young girls involved in science and technology and mathematics. And it seems, you know, it's funny talking to Brian, the idea of kind of mandatory classes and then an elective, they seem to fall back on some of those, you know, as far as the girls wanting to be part of those elective type things. So, my hope is kind of have some foundational work to kind of really build that capacity and building, and certainly send them to Brian in sixth grade with some skills that maybe we're not addressing right now. So, anyway, those K-5 modules are going to be the basis for starting that conversation.
Okay. Well, so, in terms of the budget, what does that mean for that science lab? What's going to have to happen in that room to get it up to speed, to support the new project?
Well, there's a, we're not quite there yet. I'm not really sure. That's actually why, I know we don't have all the time in the world. We have some time to kind of game plan, and that's why I'm kind of taking it slow, you know, with bringing all the kind of players. But that's something we're going to be really hitting around big time in January and February. We have to decide, figure out what we are going to need. You know, I know there's some funding sources, hopefully, that we will be able to utilize, internal, external. I think, you know, also staffing with the right person that has the expertise we need. So, we haven't quite gotten to the space yet. It's more of the overview and the objective of what the whole job would entail. I do know a few pieces of that. For example, I want it to be a co-teaching environment where teachers are bringing their kids down there and they're working with this person. You know, I'd like it to prioritize as far as grades that are going to be in there. You know, my vision as far as the way the schedule will look and that kind of thing as far as students having access to it also depends on like the robust nature of what K through 5 and those modules are kind of picking up. Obviously, it's a little, it gets a little more intense when you add to the upper grades. So, looking at a master schedule that's going to accommodate that so that it's not, okay, on Tuesdays at, you know, 1 o'clock kindergarten, you know, like it has to be strategic and appropriate to what has to be presented in the timeframe of September to June. So, those are kind of the things that we're having conversations about over and above the modules. So, haven't gotten quite yet to what the space is going to look like, but that's part of the conversation. Very, very, very hard. But we started talking in September. So, it was a good time.
Thanks. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Good evening. I wanted to start this evening by giving some kudos to Robert Lumer. As many of you, probably all of you, know, she is the person who puts in campus hours to pull off our annual Learn and Stay Assembly every year. This year was particularly rigorous in terms of that planning process. We had a lot of moving parts and a lot of pieces, some of which weren't in place until just a couple of days prior to the program itself. But we welcomed New York State Senator Trevor Gibson to our assembly to give some opening remarks. The program also included a Skype session with Colonel Paul Somersall, who was a West Point graduate and works at the Pentagon right now. He provided a lot of insight, and that was actually a nice addition to the program. And then we welcomed back Corporal Austin Butler, who was a Rhinebeck alum. He graduated in 2010, I believe. He's been stationed or was stationed for the past eight months in Djibouti, Africa, and he was able to really connect with the kids and brought some phenomenal slides back and was really able to speak with them about interacting with, you know, students and families and community and culture over there, as well as some of his responsibilities kind of as an ambassador on the part of the United States Army. We had 191 veterans were honored this year. That's the greatest number ever. And more than 100 students participated in the actual ceremony itself, from holding flags, performing in a band, and actually coming up, speaking, and honoring friends, family, and community members. As I mentioned in my last report, thanks to an arts and education grant, our seventh grade classes were able to work with improv artist Danny Dillon as they researched and planned to reenact the Salem Voyage Trials this year. Again, as I think I noted, we added a little twist to it and invited all of our fourth and fifth grade classes over at Chancellor to come over and to watch the performances. All of the feedback that I've heard has been very positive. Mr. Friskin, I cannot go anywhere in the community without some student, some child that he doesn't necessarily know at this point, pulling him aside and talking about it. He's really looking forward to getting those students in two to three years as they'll do their own Salem Voyage Trials. Leading up to the winter break, our students have participated in two service learning opportunities. I think this is the fourth or fifth annual Knit for the Need campaign, and that's sponsored by Mrs. Van Lee in our club. Again, that's well underway. We've had more than 35, 40 people at times participating in that. As I've noted in years past, in this forum, we donated anywhere up to 100 items, you know, handmade scarves, hats, mittens to a couple of local churches. And Mrs. Van Lee is taking submissions until December 15th, for any of you with some knitting talent. In addition, the student council is currently holding our annual food drive. Last year, we donated 900 items to a local pantry, and we're looking to top that mark. And we run that for a single week. So, 900 items in a single week is pretty impressive for our students. All four of our new clubs, those that were approved by the board, the last meeting are up and running. As an higher factor, the Antropology Club is going to travel to Bar College this Friday afternoon to work with archaeology professor Chris Lidger. And several of his students, they learn more about 5,000-year-old archaeological dig that exists on the Bar campus. So, our students are going to be able to have an opportunity to view a presentation given by Professor Lidger, and some of the students get to handle replicas and specimens under analysis from the site itself, try their hand at actually making some stone tools, and hear stories about and music of the One of the Indians. So, we're excited about that. Eighth grade ELA classes, students have just begun a project titled Taking a Stand. This was in conjunction with and paid for in part by Arts and Education Grant. Students will determine what it means to take a stand and impact the lives of others through research of people, groups, and events that have taken place throughout American history that resulted in taking a stand for several reasons. Students will then be working with local installation artist Mimi Rominski, as well as Pat Sexton, to look at social injustice through art, and they're actually going to be creating their own art installations. This is the first time we've ever had, you know, ever done this project, and we're not sure how it's going to go. But the current timeline calls for these works to be ready by the end of January. We're hoping to hold an open house sometime in the end of January or early February. Our seventh grade social studies classes, students are spending a week, I believe they begin this Thursday and go almost up through vacation, investigating the precursors to the Revolutionary War by participating in station work. This is a project that Mr. Friskin has been running for the last couple of years. But the nice piece to this project is we're always looking to find ways to make connections between high school students and middle school students. So, for this project, with the help of Mr. Burke, who helped organize some of our high school students and worked with our high school mentors, we have more than 30 high school students that have given up lunch and free periods to come and run those stations in each of Mr. Friskin's classes for the entire week. Gives a lot of opportunity for him to assist. He's run actually a couple of little workshops after school in preparing them. We have a number of students that are participating this year that have done this now either last year, and some who have actually done this for the last two years. So, we're looking forward to that. Parent-teacher conferences were held last week. In addition, with the help of the high school and middle school math teachers, Mr. Krebs, Dr. Davenport, and I held an information session for parents of students in Algebra I, just to discuss some changes to the curriculum and additional supports that we're putting in place to help those students. Initial feedback was very positive, and the middle school BNSBLPT continues to have ongoing discussion regarding ways to help educate and help inform and help collaborate with our parents. Winter concert season is upon us. It opens next week with a band concert next Tuesday, 7:00. It's December 17th. Next Friday, December 20th, we're going to welcome speakers from the Wolf Conservation Center and hold an assembly program for our sixth and seventh grade students. Very informative program. We held it two years, two years ago, not only teaches about wolves, but also about the balance in ecosystems. But of course, the highlight of the program is Atka, an Arctic wolf that's been an ambassador for the program for the last 15 years. So, we'll have a wolf up on stage in the yard tomorrow. Certainly, everybody is welcome. That's going to take place about 12:45, 12:45 to 14:15. And then finally, through help from a grant from the Rhinebeck Science Foundation, our eighth grade students are going to travel once again, January 13th, to Bar College to participate in the citizen science work. So, lots going on in those schools.
Absolutely. Lisa?
I already expressed this to Dr. Davenport, but I'd like to commend everybody who presented and answered questions at that presentation about Algebra I last week. I attended it in my capacity as the parent of a ninth grader, and it was very informative, but even more than the informative aspect of it, I thought it was very useful to see parents and educators and administrators have a back and forth with members of the community so that a lot of the issues that people have with the common core could be addressed by the people who know the answers to the questions. And I really appreciated that very much. I want to thank everybody. Please do convey that to your staff who participated in that.
Great. Any other questions? Diane?
So, I have two budget questions. One is just in terms of the budget, which we're going to be talking about later today. A couple of meetings ago, we had accepted some generous grants for field trips at Chancellor. And we were discussing whether Chancellor had enough money in the budget for field trips this year. But last year, we increased it from 3,000 to 4,000. Did we use up all of that money this year? Is there desire for more?
It will be by the end of the school year, sure. And primarily, what we've done with that is, again, with partnerships like PTSO usually funds one field trip per grade, the Arts and Ed, the Community Foundation, those are a few areas we've gone into to kind of get grant monies. And a lot of those organizations or those groups don't pay for transportation. So, in addition to the one field trip I try to pay for, I also offer some extra monies for field trips. You know, once or twice, when we've had those numbers, you know, because when I first came here, it was a lot bigger, a lot larger budget line. Primarily, you know, I might, you know, take a couple of hundred from another, you know, transfer from another COVID. But for the most part, we kind of know we're going to spend that on before we do. And we've been able to secure two, sometimes three, educational field trips per grade. Trying to secure a little bit more on the lower grades, there's not as a necessity in some of the upper grades for it. But yeah, we historically clean that line out of mouth.
Okay. And the second question will be no surprise to you because I ask it every year. Will Chancellor be holding a science fair this year?
It's interesting. I just talked to one of the staff members who's usually interested in doing that, and I know she is a possible man fair as well. So, we just started talking.
Great. Good work. It's a hairboard.
Is this appropriate time to ask about the wish list? What do you want to do?
I don't know. What do you want to do?
So, if we have the time?
Sure. Okay. Then they can leave. We don't have to wait around.
Yeah. We're trying to get to that. So, on your potential programs list, you've got an increase in the STEM teacher position so that we could have a full-time STEM teacher. And I'm wondering what your vision for that is? What are we looking at for the science lab?
Sure. The idea is actually, I met with Brian McDonald a few years ago, a person I had a few months ago, and since then, he's talked to me a couple of times about, they just released the K-5 module that needs to be in the modules he's teaching in middle school or high school and I agree. And that's kind of become the basis for it, for the idea of what that might look like. So, that's what we're kind of working on. You know, it is something that I certainly know enough about myself and my expertise.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks very much.
Good evening. I wanted to start this evening by giving some kudos to Roberta Lummer. As many of you, probably all of you know, she is the person who puts in campus hours to pull off our Annual Veterans Day Assembly every year. This year was particularly rigorous in terms of that planning process. We had a lot of moving parts and a lot of pieces, some which weren't in place until just a couple of days prior to the program itself. But we welcomed New York State Councilman Trevor Gibson to our assembly to give some opening remarks. The program also included a Skype session with Colonel Paul Somersall, who was a West Point graduate and works at the Pentagon right now. He provided a lot of insight, and that was actually a nice addition to the program. And then we welcome back Corporal Austin Butler, who was a Rhinebeck alum and graduated in 2010, I believe. He's been stationed, or was stationed, for the past eight months in Djibouti, Africa. And he was able to really connect with the kids and brought some phenomenal slides back and was really able to speak with them about interacting with students and families and community and culture over there, as well as some of his responsibilities, kind of as an ambassador on part of the United States Army. We had 191 veterans were honored this year. That's the greatest number ever. And more than 100 students participated in the actual ceremony itself, from holding flags, performing in a band, and actually coming up speaking and honoring friends, family, and community members. As I mentioned in my last report, thanks to an Arts and Education grant, our 7th grade classes were able to work with improv artist Danny Dillon as they researched and planned to reenact the Salem Voyage Trials this year. Again, as I think I noted, we added a little twist to it and invited all of our 4th and 5th grade classes over at Chancellor to come over and to watch the performances. All of the feedback that I've heard has been very positive. Mr. Friskinett cannot go anywhere in the community without some student, some child that he doesn't necessarily know at this point pulling him aside and talking about it. He's really looking forward to getting those students in two to three years as they'll do their own Salem Voyage Trials. Leading up to the winter break, our students have participated in two service learning opportunities. I think this is the fourth or fifth annual Need for the Need campaign, and that's sponsored by Mrs. Van Leeuwen and Art Club. Again, that's well underway. We've had more than 35, 40 people at times participating in that. As I've noted in years past, in this forum, we donated anywhere up to 100 items, handmade scarves, hats, mittens, to a couple of local churches. And Mrs. Van Leeuwen is taking submissions until December 15th, for any of you with some mittens talent. In addition, the Student Council is currently holding our annual food drive. Last year, we donated 900 items to a local pantry, and we're looking to top that mark. And we run that for a single week, so 900 items in a single week is pretty impressive for our students. All four of our new clubs, those that were approved by the Board, the last meeting are up and running. As an higher factor, the Antropology Club is going to travel to Bard College this Friday afternoon to work with archaeology Professor Chris Lidger. And several of his students, as they learn more about 5,000-year-old archaeological dig that exists on Bard campus. So our students are going to be able to have an opportunity to view a presentation given by Professor Wimmer and some of the students, get to handle replicas and specimens under analysis from the site itself, try their hand at actually making some stone tools, and hear stories about and music of the One of the Indians. So we're excited about that. 8th grade ELA classes, students have just begun a project titled Taking a Stand. This was in conjunction with and paid for in part by Arts and Education Grant. Students will determine what it means to take a stand and impact the lives of others through research of people, groups, and events that have taken place throughout American history that resulted in taking a stand for several reasons. Students will then be working with local installation artist Mimi Rominsky, as well as Pat Sexton, to look at social injustice through art, and they're actually going to be creating their own art installations. This is the first time we've ever done this project, and we're not sure how it's going to go. But the current timeline calls for these works to be ready by the end of January. We're hoping to hold an open house sometime in the end of January or early February. Our 7th grade Social Studies classes, students are spending a week, I believe they begin this Thursday, and go almost up through vacation investigating the precursors to the Revolutionary War by participating in station work. This is a project that Mr. Friskinett has been running for the last couple of years. But the nice piece to this project is we're always looking to find ways to make connections between high school students and middle school students. So for this project, with the help of Mr. Berg, who helped organize some of our high school students and worked with our high school mentors, we have more than 30 high school students that have given up lunch and free periods to come and run those stations in each of Mr. Friskinett's classes for the entire week. Gives a lot of opportunity for him to assist. He's run actually a couple of little workshops after school in preparing them. We have a number of students that are participating this year that have done this now either last year, and some who have actually done this for the last two years, so we're looking forward to that. Parent-teacher conferences were held last week. In addition, with the help of the high school and middle school math teachers, Mr. Krebs, Dr. Davenport, and I held an information session for parents of students in Algebra I, just to discuss some changes to the curriculum and additional supports that we're putting in place to help those students. Initial feedback was very positive, and the middle school BMS BLPT continues to have ongoing discussion regarding ways to help educate and help inform and help collaborate with our parents. Winter concert season is upon us. It opens next week with a band concert next Tuesday, 7:00. It's December 17. Next Friday, December 20, we're going to welcome speakers from the Wolf Conservation Center and hold an assembly program for our 6th and 7th grade students. Very informative program. We held it two years ago, not only teaches about wolves, but also about the balance in ecosystems. But of course, the highlight of the program is Atka, an Arctic wolf that's been an ambassador for the program for the last 15 years. So we'll have a wolf up on stage in the yard tomorrow. Certainly, everybody is welcome. That's going to take place about 12:45, 12:45 to 14:00. And then finally, through help from a grant from the Rhinebeck Science Foundation, our 8th grade students are going to travel once again, January 13, to Bard College to participate in Citizen Science Week. So lots going on in those schools.
Absolutely. Lisa?
I already expressed this to Dr. Davenport, but I'd like to commend everybody who presented and answered questions at that presentation about Algebra I last week. I attended it in my capacity as the parent of a 9th grader. And it was very informative, but even more than the informative aspect of it, I thought it was very useful to see parents and educators and administrators have a back-and-forth with members of the community so that a lot of the issues that people have with the common core could be addressed by the people who know the answers to the questions. And I really appreciated that very much. I want to thank everybody. Please do convey that to your staff who participated in that.
Great. Any other questions? Diane?
So I have two budget questions. One is foreign language. Do you have a sense whether, if money was available for increasing foreign language this year in the middle school, whether the schedule would allow it?
That's a very interesting question. It's one that's yet unanswered. And as I think I shared last year, with the master schedule and middle school requirements being so tight, there really has to be a give-to-get. And one of the things that we're going to look at with the implementation or a new Director of Technology coming on board is computer instruction in the middle school. See if there are ways that we can either incorporate that into the classroom or just look at a different model. So foreign language going from every other day to every day might be possible, but there are other dominoes that are going to have to fall for that to be able to take place. But again, it's a wish list item, and it's a vision out there at some point.
So it's possible this plan could evolve within this budget cycle? Or are you thinking really next year?
I don't know.
Okay, fair enough.
I think it would be ambitious to think that we could put this in place in this budget cycle, because I think there's a lot of other research that needs to be done, but it's possible.
And the other is, jumping the gun a little bit later in our committee meetings, Curriculum Committee is going to talk about the Accelerated Reader Program. And I was just wondering, as I was reading, I was wondering what curriculum point you're trying to address with that program? And as a budgetary question, is it something that you're trying to address that you can't because you don't have enough personnel to do it in a more enriching way? I don't really want to jump the gun about what the program is, but it doesn't sound like there's a lot of human interaction or an enriching experience taking a test in a book that you just read online.
The Accelerated Reader, and I'm sure that the Curriculum Committee members will report on our discussions at the meeting, the Accelerated Reader Program is not really designed for that purpose. It's really to increase the amount of independent reading that students are doing. And it's really designed specifically not to take away from instruction in the classroom. So it does happen outside of the school, but it's more important.
Okay, very good. Thanks. Any other questions? John, thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start with a few updates from our extracurricular program. There are 50 Rhinebeck High School students who are named as Mid-Hudson Athlete League Scholar Athletes. These are individuals who have maintained at least a 90 average, a composite average during the fall athletics. So our congratulations to them. I want to recognize the Gay-Straight Alliance and Buckland Middle School Student Council for co-hosting what is, for me, the first high school talent show in my career. I know BMS has had many talent shows, so we were lucky to have Mrs. White's all's expertise. We have, as you well know, a lot of very talented students in BMS, and I just, it was just tremendously fun to show. It was great to see the older students supporting the younger students. I had to resist the temptation to run down to Mrs. Welch's room the next day and ask him if we can do this in the spring. It's a lot of work to put on. But again, I wanted to commend the kids, the advisors. It was just a great, great talent show. The National Honor Society has inducted 15 new members into the National Honor Society. Our Environmental Club had a successful fundraiser over the fall to raise funds for orphaned elephants. And each of our four grade levels in high school has sponsored an individual elephant and raised funds to donate to this orphanage in Kenya. Our freshmen have raised similar funds, not to say that all, any of the elephants are going to be left in this competition. In the arts, in honor of Domestic Violence and Bullying Awareness Month, Grace Smith House recently asked artists to submit creative expressions and speak out against violence. This poster was initially assigned as a sketchbook assignment in Mrs. Bear's studio art class. Five of our students submitted work to be considered, and one of our students won a prize in the high school category for her artistic submission. A number of our student musicians have been recognized recently in instrumental music. We had one student attend an ASMR Allstate Conference, two attended Area Allstate, and two attended Odd County. Two of our student musicians volunteered their time to play at the Montgomery Post American Legion Auxiliary Veterans Day Ceremony in Rhinebeck. In choral music, two of our students were selected to participate in Odd County, and that festival is going to be held on January 25 and 26. Four of our choral students participated in the Zone 10 Area Offstate. And also, our high school choral students recently traveled to New York City to see a Broadway musical, Big Fish, on Route 6. About 90 kids went in two buses. They all had a great time. And as usual, compliments from our chaperones and from the theater itself and the way they comport themselves. In, you know, here I wrote in academics, I don't, I think it's artificial to say that there's a distinction between arts and academics, so if you could help me think of a better word, I'd appreciate it. At any rate, I want to echo Mr. Kennett's remarks and thank the math department for really organizing and implementing the parent presentation on Algebra I and 1A. We had about 55 parents attend. Mr. Kennett sent very well-received and very useful comments from our audience. Math teacher Kristina Carl was commended by Dutchess County Community College for excellence in her statistics class. As you may remember, the students who enrolled in our statistics class are also eligible on credit through my PCC. In physical education, as the culminating activity for a dance unit, students participated in a flash mob dance between periods several weeks ago. Now, I have to say, when Mrs. Hackett first approached me and described what she would want to have happen, I was nonplussed. This is impressive, at least, and I think it's one of the fifth rule you learn in principal school, no dancing in the hallways, no mobs in the hallways. But I have to say that Mrs. Hackett's work, Mr. Judd's work, all of our kids, it was really phenomenal, and I look forward to the students repeating this again next year. Students will also perform this dance at our pep rally in late January. So again, I commend all the students. All of our high school students were involved in it. It was just, it was great. And my thanks to Mr. Kennett as well for his flexing to allow us this experiment. In science, students in environmental science and biology have just wrapped up learning bird calls, and they're maintaining bird feeders on school grounds to help us in microspecies that are making their way down from Canada or from the South. Some of our science department faculty participated in the science design contest, the Rhinebeck Science Foundation Discovery Fest, and they worked on the egg stream design challenge, which I'm sure you enjoy. Students in earth science have produced posters of fictional and real minerals and rocks in their geology unit, and students were able to make homemade sedimentary rocks by mixing cement, lime, sand, and other materials to make conglomerates and learn how those sorts of rocks are made in nature. In the English department, our students attended a field trip to see the Tempest at New Paltz. After the play, the students were able to engage in some questions and answers with the cast and crew, which they found to be very interesting, very useful. Our students read the Tempest last year as 9th graders, so it was great to practice the play now, and it's also excellent preparation for their reading of the path, which occurs through sophomore year. Earlier this month, I think some of our seniors, our seniors' classes held the second annual Rhinebeck High School Correct Texting Competition. And in this competition, students use their cell phones to correct and compose grammatically perfect English sentences. And some of the leading texters, textists, and head prizes were awarded to the top of these students who were successful in this competition. Looking ahead, we have a band concert tomorrow evening beginning at 7:00, and this week is the start of the winter athletic season with some basketball conferences.
Fantastic, great. Any questions for Dr. Davenport?
Another budget, you know, wish list question.
I thought you were going to ask me if I was in the dance.
Because I'd like to see video.
So would I.
You'd have to try.
I wanted to ask you about your trip to see Naviance and how that went and what your impressions were. I know you went with Marvin Krebs and curious about that.
Well, I went with my colleagues in the guidance department, Mr. Haywood and Mr. Lefferson. Mr. Krebs kindly connected us with Dr. Deborah Hardy, who's the Director of Guidance at Somers High School, a past president of the New York State Association of Guidance Counselors. And she was tremendously generous with her time and gave us an overview of both Naviance and another program called Career Cruiser. The distinction between the two is that Career Cruiser focuses more on developing career plans. As she explained to us, it's trending towards, her feeling is that it's going to get, Career Cruiser is going to get involved in providing a platform for students to apply to colleges, but not by Naviance. Naviance is all about both career planning software and also a management system that allows students to apply to colleges digitally. So just really eye-opening presentation. We're interested in pursuing probably one or the other of the two programs. I think Career Cruising, again, this is a very preliminary on my part, it's my own reaction, might be of more utility to the district in that it also has functions for middle school students. As you know, in our guidance plan, middle school students and high school students have to work on a career plan through time in high school, and this is sort of a tail and ache to that. A little more user-friendly, I think. But I think both really merit more investigation and more research. Mr. Kennett and Mr. Krebs and I are going to attend a VNI career improvement, we have a little more information on that software. So both very interesting. I think it would be very useful. I think at this point, we want to make a decision, the district wants to make a decision in terms of what direction they want to go, either Naviance or Career Cruiser. Although at Somers Day, I have both. I want to. They're both very impressive, very impressive programs.
And you think you'd need another guidance counselor to be able to?
In talking with Dr. Hardy, what became pretty clear to me is that there'd be a significant human resource need in order to implement either one of these programs. There's a lot of data management, there's instruction for kids, there's instruction for parents, for teachers. And thinking too about the overlap in Career Cruiser between middle school and high school, and then referring a little bit with Mr. Kennett, I thought that using Career Cruiser in middle school would require or benefit from the help of a guidance counselor. So I think maybe to straddle middle school and high school to develop even further of your development career plans in middle school, I think it would be beneficial to have a guidance counselor in that capacity.
Any other questions?
And thank you so much. And again, as I always say, all three of you, you know, you just, there's just so much rich going on in each school, it's kind of like my head spin. And I always, and, you know, I'll just say what I always say, which is that I really wish and look forward to a time when we can really be keeping these things daily or weekly on our website so that people can know all the many interesting things that are happening in the schools with art and science and music and sports and all the different community connections we made. They're just, it's really a lot of vibrant, exciting things that the kids do. And so, thank you tonight. We move on now to this agenda, our budget update, our 2013 and '14 budget development update.
Yeah, on the second phase of our budget development process, to follow up on the introduction of the list of potential programs and services that our administrators have developed and, as you heard this evening, are pursuing more detail on. The second phase of that is to provide you what we call a rollover budget. Just in terms of perspective, this is something we, in prior years, would roll out in late January, I think, if I'm not mistaken, but correct me if I'm wrong, maybe early January.
Maybe early January.
But we're doing it now in December as part of our goal, started over the last year or so, to accelerate the process in order to provide us more time to be thoughtful and reflective and questioning about the various possibilities. So just to be, as brief as possible, the rollover budget is a, is at the very least a mathematical exercise in taking our current budget and rolling it over. We know some of the fixed costs that are involved in doing exactly what we're doing this year, next year. It doesn't address at this early point in the budget, new programs and services, none of the things from that list of potential programs and services has been built in here. We've not made adjustments based on either known or to-date unknown retirements or other changes in staffing. We will do that eventually in the process, but the rollover budget does not reflect that. We just take this year's, know what our fixed costs are, and calculate mathematically if we were to do everything next year that we're doing in the current year with all the, with the factors that we do know. This is what we'd be looking at in terms of increases. And that just kind of gives us a baseline so we know where we're starting. And the other factor here of the last couple of years is that our goal, unless the board directs us to a different goal, our goal is to develop a budget that stays within New York State's mandated tax cap, which I would point out is not necessarily a 2% tax levy cap, although it's been incorrectly called that by a lot of people. It's a very complicated and convoluted formula that derives a tax levy cap according to the state's legislation. And our goal, again, unless we were to hear something different from the board at some point in time, is to develop a budget that stays within that cap. Exceeding that cap, you may recall from prior years, requires a supermajority vote. There are certain rules of the game nowadays that dictates what happens if you try for a supermajority and you're unsuccessful twice, then you're on a contingency budget, which is really an austere budget. So I mean, the rules of the game, for those of you who haven't been following this, is a lot different. So that's our goal, and Tom has worked up for you some preliminary figures as to how that looks now. I guarantee you, every document of the three that we provided you tonight is going to change. It's a guarantee. And we know that some of those figures, we won't know about for another couple of months. So we'll plug in our best guesses, we'll be conservative, we'll build our budget based on those assumptions. And as we go through the process and more information becomes known to us, we'll make those adjustments, again, with that goal in mind. And it's up to the board to tell us as we work through the process where you want us to be by the time we end relative to that tax levy cap and the needs of our program and our children. Those are the things that we're trying to balance and do the best we can for our children in terms of programs and services, as well as to operate within the restrictions of the state's tax levy cap. So essentially, that's what Tom has put together for you. Tom, I don't know whether you'd like to give, as the distinguished delegate from Missouri will say, a quick rock skip through these.
I will, I'll be real quick about it, too.
Just to tell you about some of my assumptions here, as far as equipment, supplies, materials, contractual items, I just rolled them over as-is. I did not increase them in any way, shape, or form unless I knew something specific. So that's, so a lot of numbers don't change at all, but the numbers that do change the most are salaries. And the salaries that are in there are those that are known salaries, that they're currently earning. earning, unless there is a contract that is settled for a particular group. If I have a contract for a particular group, their numbers are exactly in there as they should be. But as you know, we have two groups that are going to be contract expiring at the end of this year, and we currently don't have one. So in the budget is included step and a negotiation part that's in the budget. We can talk about that in executive session. But things that I did know that were going up, I did do that, BOSI's, for example, we don't know exactly what they're, we know they're going up, we just don't know how much. So I, kind of anywhere from 2% to 5%, depending on the category. So I've gone through there and made some of those adjustments as you went through. I have not taken into consideration any of the retirements. There are eight of them altogether, six teachers, one teaching assistant, and one custodian. Those have not been taken into consideration in this in the first draft. They will be taken in, and if I know of anything in the meantime, I will take care of that as retirements do become known to myself. So you know, if, nothing ever really jumps out. Now, there's a couple of things that I know that are going down, that aren't down in this budget. Special ed costs. We have fewer kids this year currently than what was budgeted for last year. Unless we get a large influx, I anticipate that number to go down quite a bit, actually. But you haven't adjusted for that yet? But I have not adjusted for that. So there's two big things I haven't adjusted for yet that I know will be lowering this overall budget. Also, if, and you don't have to really go to the page, I'll just explain it, but when you get to page 17, employee benefits, I do know the retirement, the employee retirement system is going down. Employee retirement system. Teacher retirement system is going up. I can't remember, I think it's 17 and 1/2. There's a range. I took the highest range of it. I think it's currently at 16 and 1/4, potentially going to 17 and 1/2. Hopefully, they'll come down with a lower number. So those things I knew, I did make adjustments for that. I did make adjustments for Social Security, knowing that, you know, through this thing, salaries did increase due to steps and that. So I did put in for those type of things. Chris, Tom, it's going to go up 10%. I'm just assuming. It could be higher, it could be lower, but I did take a guess at that one because I know those things are going to go up. Health insurance, we know it's going up. How much? We hope that that number will come down. I just wanted to project on the safe side to begin with. We haven't even had our first meeting as far as premium rates for next year. Those. What did you project for that? So 8% is for the rate I anticipate. That's what we believe the rate is going to come in from Blue Cross, Blue Shield. Indications amongst our group is hoping it should be, end up about 5. So that could be helpful. I did put in the bond amounts, knowing what was going to happen with them. So there's a decrease due to that. It's not humongous, but well, from year to year, it is. So that is good. Overall, we're looking just short of this rollover budget, a $1.2 million increase, just about, which equates to a 3.95% budget to budget. Okay? Any questions about how I put that together, or want to understand my assumptions in any way? Okay. I did put the revenues together, and let's not look at taxes first. But I did go through and do a couple of things as I went through. You know, I took out money for the adult education. We're not doing that anymore. I took that out on both sides, expenditure and revenue. There's the expenditure side, so that's a help. Interest and earnings, I'm downplaying that one a little bit more. Just interest rates have not rebounded at all, made no changes to the miscellaneous or anything of that nature. In state aid, I increased those categories by 2% except for the last category, which I know is just a flat rate. So that, so I'm hoping we see a 2% increase in state aid, but we won't know until the figures start coming out. It did not change anything about the interfund transfers and the likes of that. So once again, you're looking at a budget increase of 1.2%, 3.95%, which generates currently, going back to the first page, a tax levy increase of 4.52%. So that's where we are on the revenue side, but this will develop as more information becomes about. Yes?
In the percentage column, there are a number of entries that are hashtag div/01.
Yeah.
A placeholder for something?
No, you can't divide by zero. That's the answer that comes back. That's the indication that it's trying to divide something by zero, and you just can't do that. But you bring a great place, I should clean that up and just at least put zero in there as opposed to the hashtag. But the more important one is the tax levy limit because some things have, I don't want to say have come out, but we did get one number, which was actually very good for us. So if we go to the tax levy limit, we start with last year's levy, and we do have our tax-based growth factor for next year. It was published about two weeks ago, and it's 0.7%. It's the second highest in the county. And actually, we're kind of higher than most everybody except for us in Beacon. We're way ahead of everybody else as far as property additions to the community compared to other ones. So you know, that was pretty nice, so 0.7%.
So that's a known number?
That's a known number. That is known.
Okay.
So that's, and that was a positive. That's nothing that we've done. That's a reflection of growth of assessments in our community. Right. And it's growth of new property. This is not for the value of your house has gone up. This is for actual new property. So they figure over the past seven years, we had 0.7% increase in buildings in this town. I don't know what makes it up. Could be, you know, part of the hospital, we heard, was going to be put onto the tax rolls, so that could be a part of this. So there's, and I've seen some houses, I've seen construction going on, a lot more than I've seen in a lot of other places. So that's a positive. So we add payments in lieu of taxes, things of that nature. If you go about 2/3 of the way through, and this is one we do not know yet, and that's the allowable levy growth factor, it's a lesser of 2% of the CPI. If I remember correctly, the towns and villages CPI, when they went out, was at 1.61%.
6.6.
Was it 1.6? I thought it was 1.6 something, but you're probably very right on that one, just too many numbers. That number won't become known until the second or third week in January, and that will really cement that particular one. Our payments in lieu of taxes are going up, and we had $162,000 last year that we did not collect taxes for, and we're carrying it over to this, carrying it over to this year to make that determination. So if we go out to the next page, just bringing that over, that limit over, and that total that you see there is the local, the capital local expenditures, the 1.2 million. I just kept it as it was from last year. We won't know until state aid run comes out what that number will be, but it should be something somewhat similar to that. It could be ending up a little bit less because we did refinance. But when we get to the bottom line, we have an allowable limit of 26,201,000, so on and so forth. Our prior year levy was 25,494, in change, so this allows us to increase our tax levy by $707,000, or 2.78%. So as you see, as you said earlier, the 2% cap is kind of a misnomer because it can be above, below, or it can be exactly to it. But right now, we look as though we may have a maximum tax increase at a simple majority of 2.78. That number's going to change, but that shouldn't change too wildly. So, but what that differs from the rollover budget to this number is we're basically $440,000 over the limit. Once again, that doesn't take in consideration any retirements, any, it can come and go. I mean, I know there's things going out of the budget, but then again, I'm sure the principals and directors will want to introduce new programs. So you know, this is just the rollover of everything staying the same. So we're, any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Yes?
Does the levy limit calculation include the carryover of the amount that we could have raised the levy last year but did not?
Yeah, and that's back on the first page. It's the last number, the available, $162,000. So that helps us for this year. If we had to take the 162 out, now we're looking at more like 2%. Or probably 2.2, the 1.5 and the 7.7, you're more like 2.2. And this is the only year we can carry that, right? You can only carry over? Yeah, it's a year by year. It's not like you can bankroll it and set it aside, and I want to use it two years from now. It's got to be used the next year. If you don't use it all, though it does, there's money left over, and that can be carried over the next year.
So Tom, so the two things that will be known maybe in January are the allowable levy growth factor and then the actual capital local expenditures. So you think by the end of January, early February, we'll have a solid number out?
Yeah, pretty, yeah. Yeah, it should be pretty solid by then. There can be changes after that, but they usually be slight, and that would typically be the state aid part, that capital. That can, I've seen that, that fluctuated a little bit last year.
Right.
Because they said they were going to cut it back, and so I cut it back, and then they decided not to cut it back, so we have to cut it back. So it was kind of confusing as far as that was concerned. But the state controller went down, went through my numbers, and everything was fine.
Right.
So there was no issues there. So he said a lot of school districts had that issue last year. They didn't know what the state was doing with the capital, and some did it and some didn't. But he said we did it correctly, so that was, that was good to see.
Okay. And you know, I don't have the calendar in front of me. What's our schedule, do we know, for the first, the next iteration is the first draft budget? Do you have a record?
It was January 4th.
It says 1st of January.
January.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions? All right. Well, this is all really useful information as we dive into this, so thanks very much.
And next time, you'll have your budget books and everything, so hold on to these, and next time, you'll have a binder with stuff already filled in. We'll punch three holes in each of these boxes.
Okay, great. Thank you. We come now to our board committee reports. And what do we have?
Curriculum and communication.
Okay. So curriculum, yeah. Curriculum's first. Who's doing that?
I think that's me. Okay, so.
Don't feel you have to read, you know, just, that's my job, is to keep you awake.
So we invited John Kevinsor to come to our meeting to talk about the earth science test-out option and sort of the folkloric quality that this opportunity has become. And we wanted to, Joe provided us some historical context about how this option evolved, and what we spoke mostly about was the idea that there were people in the community who understood the ability to test out, there were people in the community who didn't. And we really wanted to try to make it a much more democratic opportunity for all. So we talked a little bit about informing outgoing 7th grade or incoming 8th grade parents with just sort of the general meeting to talk through what these choices may mean for students. What could it mean once they get to high school, and why would this option be appropriate for your kid or not, given the fact that you could do all, that they could do all the work independently and still not gain the reach of? So John is going to look into the form of what a general meeting might look like and timing for doing that, and bring back to the menu, see how it feels. The next thing we talked about was the accelerated reader that Diane mentioned, and this sort of came about through a conversation that a parent had with the 8th grade English teacher, who then spoke to John. And as Diane pointed out, sort of the impersonal nature of this reading program. So John explained that it really is a program to help kids get to read more, and we discussed the idea that it may or may not serve that purpose for a section of those kids. For some, they have to read to get points which apply to their grade at the end of the term, but there are kids that are reading Diary of a Wimpy Kid to make up their points. And it just seems like it was a tool that was being used just to gain points rather than garner this level of reading that the 7th and 8th grade teachers are really trying to promote. So we asked Marvin to weigh in on it. He's never really taken a look at the accelerated reader. But his concern is that, given the new world order of deeper contextual reading, he's not really sure that this is doing its job necessarily. So we've asked Joe to talk to the 7th and 8th grade teachers to see if there is some more robust way that this program could be used, not just simply to get points for grading, but to actually provide a good reading tool for these kids.
We asked John to speak with his teachers.
Yes, John, yeah. I'm sorry, did I have to? So, and that was really the bulk of our meeting. We have a number of things that continue to be on the agenda for our next week meeting, Tuesday meeting, something like that. But we will get follow-up from John about earth science and accelerated reader next.
Okay, great. Any questions for curriculum? Well, it sounds like this sort of math meeting was well-received, so a concept maybe to talk about science is promising. So things we're taking out.
I think it seems more like where's the best place for it and what other things might get pulled into that, you know, because, I mean, you don't want to have a public meeting, call people together, and have five minutes of information to impart. I mean, it's, you know, we want to make sure there's some meat there, and we talked about some other potential topics, for example, choosing a foreign language, you know, that you need to do when your child's in middle school, that maybe could be rolled together into a more comprehensive program that might be able to be. So he's going to talk with Carmela Fountain, our middle school guidance counselor, to see if, not only what might make sense in terms of content, but also where it might make the most sense to, you know, end of 7th grade, beginning of 8th grade, 6th grade, you know, and you could make cases for various configurations. So we'll leave it to the people who are working with those kids and those parents to come back and say, yeah, this is kind of, this kind of makes the most sense to do something here. So we'll hear what they have to say next month.
And I think, you know, I actually don't have our goals right in front of me, but one of the, sort of, one of the goals that we have about, that relate to curriculum, I think, and as you teased it out for your goals, Joe, is to engage parents in some of it, that we're all, each of us responsible for our children's learning, so hitting that middle school parent population, I think fits nicely with our goals. Okay, then we have, thanks, Laura. We have a communication in the minutes.
An excellent segue, actually, from the report from Curriculum Committee because a lot of what we spoke about in our last meeting was building on one of the goals, the annual goals of the board around communication with parents, families, community members, and educators. So we debriefed about the recent series of coffee hours, which although we had small numbers turn out, we deem to be very successful, and we're actually looking to you tonight to give us some guidance in terms of moving forward with perhaps two more during this year. We hope that will be found to be acceptable by you, our colleagues. And we also do want to reach out to all the people who attended the first series of discussions with a personal letter. So I'll distribute a text that we've come up with in the committee, and if you guys can give me any feedback or editing on it, so we can send it out, that would be great. So the two dates we're proposing are here in the minutes, one in January and one in March, and we'll follow up with all of you to see if you'll be available. Ideally, we would have a large number of board members at each of these events to make it really effective. We also greeted our new Director of Technology and Communications, Stephen Jensen, was present for our first meeting on his first day, and we were filled with enthusiasm and excitement. And we were filled with enthusiasm and excitement and sort of dreaming of all the things we would be able to do together and...
And he promptly put his resignation in.
I totally got it too.
We totally freaked him out.
Yeah, totally freaked him out. But he actually has already been incredibly helpful as our public comment from Jen Hamood sort of picked up on. He's already helping us to think about how we can begin to gather information about where families that leave the district are going, try to get some sense of what kinds of decisions cause people to leave the Rhinebeck School System. And we began a kind of preliminary discussion of what kind of interviews we might want to conduct with people as they leave. So it sort of seems this is a two-front initiative. One is just to look at the data from enrollment and the other is to think about what kind of questions we would like to ask families as they're leaving. We then spoke much more broadly with Mr. Jensen about the district website and all the wonderful things we could perhaps be doing with it. And one of the first priorities, I believe, that he has set with you, Joe, is to really look at school world and see what the capacities are in that program, perhaps we're not utilizing it to its fullest extent, and come back to talk to us once he's had a chance to really examine that. As we all have recognized, I think the website is a major, major point of connection for us with our families, whether it's looking for a snow day announcement or, you know, updates on wonderful things that are happening in the district, trying to look up information about the curriculum. I think it's really a go-to place increasingly for all of us. We like to have meetings and community events, of course, but when people can't get to those events, we need to have a website that will give that kind of information. So it's very exciting that he's going to help us think about that and we're going to continue to develop goals with him in our regular meetings.
Fantastic. Very exciting. Any questions for communications or comments? I'll just, I was just, I was surprised the dates for the next coffee were kind of, seemed January. It seemed really soon today.
It is soon.
The March one, well, okay, oh, so you were saying like one or the other?
No, no, we were thinking both of them because there was, we were timing this with the budget development process.
In our original discussions, we were talking about doing two. One in October, which we recently, it was in November, whatever, yeah. And one in the spring before the board needed to finalize a budget. So there would be an opportunity in case people had something to say about that to speak their mind. And perhaps it was the elation of the first round being successful. But we were talking about perhaps we could or should try to do a third. Actually, the conversation was we should try to do one per quarter. We've already, the first quarter's already come and gone, so maybe we could do two more before the end of the year. Let's find out what our colleagues think. And quite frankly, if doing one in January is more than people want to handle, we'll do one in March and call it a successful pilot and perhaps plan quarterly for next year. It's really up to the board. And I think it's obvious to me, regardless of whether there are three people who are there or seven people or 20 people or more at some point, that it's really critical to have, have a critical mass of board members there. Not everybody perhaps in each session, but, and I think we had great representation this first time through. And that would be, I would suggest that kind of attendance or better from board members ought to be what we should be shooting for. And if we're at the point of maybe only one or two can show up, maybe that's probably not the best way to staff those. So it's really up to what the rest of the board wants to do, so.
We can solicit your feedback on the particulars of the dates shortly.
Okay. Thanks very much. Very good. All right, we move on now to comments. Does anyone have any good news? Of course, when the principals are here, there's always a lot of good news, but any other additions to any?
There are a whole bunch of new computers staring at us. I think that's Diane Linderberger's grant.
Yes, it is. Seen in Monday.
Excellent.
Came in Friday night.
Were you here loading them?
Yeah, I had to load them. Better even me. Guy from FedEx came here about 6 o'clock at night. He says, "I got some textbooks for you." So, okay, I'll go and, all right, bring them in. So I go out there and there's these big boxes of computers, so.
Kind of triangular shaped boxes.
Yeah, I was like, these are no textbooks. No way.
And I think it's fortuitous that the grant was approved and this equipment is arriving just as our Director of Technology has arrived. So I know he's spent a lot of time with Diane and he's really been, for a guy who's only been working here for seven days, he's getting around, which is what he needs, he knows he needs to do that. And he's jumped right in. In fact, the funny anecdote for me was that communications meeting, which was the afternoon of his first day on the job, and I didn't even bother mentioning it to him because I know, I knew he would just be like on total overload with filling out, you know, payroll paper, just all this stuff, you know, getting his picture taken for an ID card, all that kind of mundane stuff to get your office set up and kind of get going. And I came into the meeting a couple of minutes late and he was already sitting there. I was like, you know, I said to him like, "What are you doing?" He says, "Well, I saw it on the web calendar. I thought I should be here." So, yeah, well, that's cool, as long as you got the time and your head's not spinning around, stay. And it was actually a good meeting. He contributed to it quite well. So it's nice to have him here and he's really jumped in with both feet. And I'm expecting some, some pretty good things from him, so. That's good. I also, I have another one that I'd like to mention. I'm not sure how many of you noticed. If you haven't and you, before you head out the front door at the end of our meeting, if you walk a few paces to the left outside of the middle school cafeteria, we replaced one of our water fountains with a pretty cool little thing that actually is designed not to, you remember from your own school experience, you know, water fountains in the hallway, you know, kids putting their mouths on the fountains or getting their teeth knocked out if somebody pushes them. You remember all that stuff, your own experience. Well, Sheldon put in, for a trial basis, a water fountain that actually has a little setup so you, it encourages kids to bring their own water bottles and put them there and fill them up with water instead of sucking on the nozzle there as is typically done. And it has a cool little counter on there that tells you how many bottles of bottled water you saved by refilling your bottle out of that thing. And the last time I worked past, there was like 680 plastic bottles of water that that thing made available by having refillable things. So it just, you know, it's a little thing, what you were talking at our last meeting about, you know, our green footprint and the LED lights in the parking lot. And that's another example of some, just little things that Sheldon is doing. I'll give him all the credit to, and he's looking to put them in other places. But we try it out there first before he buys a whole bunch of these things to make sure they're working properly and kids are using them in the right way and they're being respectful of the fact that there's a fairly robust stream of water that comes out of that thing into a bottle. And so far, so good. Kids seem to really like it, so.
That's great.
Yeah, check it out on your way out.
I've seen those things in college campuses. And then some of those campuses stopped selling bottled water. So I don't know if bottled water, but if you put in more and then you stop selling the bottled water.
That's a way to move.
Very good. Any other good news?
I'll just say, I know...
I just quickly put my hand up. I just want to say, even though it came out in the principals' reports and we commended all involved with this meeting, I think that the meeting for the 8th and 9th grade parents was such a huge success. I heard from many people who attended it how much they appreciated the opportunity to learn from the teachers, talking about the curriculum and the challenges that are being faced, the kind of positive steps they felt they could take in order to support their own students in their homes. And it was just, by all accounts, a tremendous success. So I just wanted to, one more time, say how great I thought it was.
Yeah, great. No, that is fantastic. Very good. Excellent. And I'll just share that a couple of our soccer players were named to the Poughkeepsie Journal All-Star Team. And then one of our players, Seth McLennan, was named to New York State First Team All-State Soccer Team. So that's quite an accomplishment. I wanted to share that. Any other good news? Okay, well, we've had...
I'll just piggyback on your comment and we had a, also had a field hockey player make the Poughkeepsie All-Stars.
Oh, fantastic. Great.
And two made third team All-Stars as well.
Excellent. Very good. Very successful athlete.
I thought that wasn't being published till Sunday. But you got inside information.
Well, the kids are told to get their pictures taken. Very good. Thank you. All right, we move on now to old business. Do we have anything for old business?
Yes, I have an item in your packet under 5.2. Kind of a follow-up to some letter writing we'd done earlier in the year that we shared with our parents and community. And based on some subsequent discussions that we've had around this table, Geirdra, it's kind of a law firm, they've been doing a lot of letter drafting here. And they drafted the letter that's in your packet with relatively little input from me. But in order for us to move forward, my sense would be to provide it to the rest of you, which we've done, and solicit any feedback. I mean, not wordsmith it because we could be here for a couple of hours wordsmithing any, any letter. But if you have some feedback, things that we left out that we didn't address that we should or things that we addressed in a way that you want to suggest something different before we start communicating with the players, Commissioner King, Chancellor Tish, and a whole host of others that I called out in the memo to your packet. I think we should get some feedback from you before we start putting it out there. And I think we should do that, you know, in a timely, timely manner, so.
Lisa?
I don't know if this would fall under the category of wordsmithing or not, so I'm just going to throw it out there. On the first, and I want to say, so that this doesn't sound like it's negative, but it's not meant to be, that this is a very impressive letter. I give you both, you all, kudos for doing it. I'm very impressed. But the first bullet point on the first page that begins the pressure to align curricula, I am uncomfortable with the shock and awe comment. I think that the tone of this in general is very calm and rational, which I think is compelling. That sort of steps out of that tone. And so for me, it makes it a little bit more of an advocacy piece and less of a, you know, a reaction of people who are experiencing this on the ground. So I would suggest, just taking that phrase out, otherwise I really don't have any changes that I would want to suggest.
Good comment. Thank you.
A quick comment, I too, I think it's a great letter. I really think it's, as Lisa said, very calm and rational and thoughtful rather than, you know, crazy screaming. I did have a question about the second bullet point because you bring up the example of the Early World Civilizations Curricular Guide. We're not using that here. So my question is, is it appropriate for us to pick on curriculum we're not even using? Because we found better ways of delivering, hopefully better ways of delivering this kind of, you know, age inappropriate curriculum, at least I'm hoping we have. It'd be nice to get a word from Marvin about that, but it's just a suggestion. I don't know. But I really do think it's great.
Thanks. I guess one thought, and we can look at this again and think about it, was, and it was actually raised by a parent, at least one parent at our chancellor meeting, about the expectations curriculum-wise. So, but maybe a rewording of that that doesn't specify theirs. I think one of the thoughts was kind of highlighting to them that their expectation, the kind of curriculum they are putting out, as we said, is sort of worrisome. And the comment about undermining genuine efforts to elevate curriculum goals that in some ways I think our concern is when you do that, then you do kind of shift the conversation in ways that people are uncomfortable with. Instead of really focusing on elevating curriculum goals, if they're setting these curriculum guides that aren't appropriate developmentally, then, you know, as I think we can see, people who maybe think, "Throw the baby out with bathwater," is what can then kind of snowball. But maybe we could rephrase that in ways that feel more comfortable.
Or even use the example from our own district, right, that there are second graders who don't understand the Congressional Congress, you know, that they needed to know.
Sure, we'll take a look at that.
So look at the example.
Any other comments? So what we could do is revise this in the ways that people, you know, or take a look at it again. And then, you know, if we wanted, you know, we'll just, in some timeline, by the beginning of the year, certainly be able to, if people are all comfortable with it, then we can nail down, yes.
So is, what you anticipate doing is to finish whatever revisions you're planning to make and then sign it on behalf of the Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District?
That was our thought, yeah. That's what we had done with the parent letter.
I think that would be ideal if we can come to some consensus over the final letter. It seems like we're reasonably close to that from the couple of comments that I've heard this evening, so.
And then I think that puts the period on, we had said in our letter to parents that we were going to communicate with SED. So I think that's what we're going to need to do, yeah.
And also, parents who did attend the coffee hour, a number of them spoke to being very happy that the first letter of communication came out from, from the board and from the superintendent and from the school district, to families. And they asked about other communications that would take place. So I think the timing really is appropriate now for us to follow up with it.
I also think that we're, you know, timing wise, especially if we can kind of finish this and get it out soon. And soon, I'm not sure if before the end of December is too soon or the beginning of January, but I, from what I'm hearing, and you're probably reading some of this as well, that when the legislature is back in session after the first of the year, there is some, I anticipate some legislation being introduced that will address some, if not all, of the points that are made here. And I think it's good timing to be able to weigh in on these things now or soon as opposed to not until April or May. By that point, the horse could be out of the barn. So I think we'd like to weigh in when it actually might have some level of impact on pending legislation. We'll see.
Yeah, as we've seen, which is a development that's really just over these past few months, that the legislature, in multiple ways, is sort of going to address these issues. What that will look like at the end of the day, who knows, because a lot of the issues were legislated initially anyway, so.
Well, I think they're starting to get a lot of feedback, especially from parents. And they're responding to that. Whatever their motivation is, they are responding to it. I'm going to a meeting this Friday morning down in Westchester County, similar to the one I attended last month, that was also attended by four members of the Board of Regents. That superintendent's group has invited a lot of the legis, well, they've invited all of the legislators that represent Duchess Rockland, Putnam, and Westchester, which is... is a goodnum more than the four regents. It'll be interesting to see, A, who shows up, and B, what they have to say when they're in a forum with 30 or 40 school superintendents asking the same tough questions. So I'll, you know, report out on that, too. It may even make it, I expect it may even make it into an article in the Westchester paper that you'll see in one of your Eclipse, iterations of Eclipse, because that, they'll be, the press will be covering that, I'm sure, so.
Diane? Joe, just have a question. I know you were in reviewing the letter. I just want to make sure, I mean, this is covering everything that we've heard and that's been brought to us from parents, but is this covering everything that the teachers or the administrators have too, that brought to you, I guess?
Well, that's, that's a good question. I mean, a lot of this is stuff we've been hearing from them, too, but I.
Right. I just wouldn't want to leave anything out of it.
No, that's, that's a, that's a very good point. And I will, I will make sure that I run a draft of this letter, as I did with the last letter, at the very least pass to our administrators and say, "Do we miss anything? Do we get it right? Did we misstate anything here?" We want to be accurate and we want to be consistent with what's happening on the ground in, in the schools in our school districts. So thanks for that reminder. I'll do that when we meet with them tomorrow.
That's a good point. I appreciate this sort of collective nature of that in terms of expressing ourselves to the higher policymakers, their input. So thanks for bringing that up.
Okay, well, then we'll make the various tweaks and hear from the administrators, and then we'll get back to people, you know, if we're moving right along, maybe the email and if not, in the first, after the first of the year, we'll see how that goes. Okay, thanks, everybody. Any other issues under old business? You know, I'll bring this up under old business since we're talking about legislators and whatnot, and state aid issues. Broke this up for me. In the, in the past, we have lobbied our state legislators every year. And, I don't know, we started doing it in their home offices, or Terry Gibson came here last year, probably five or six years ago. And, you know, the topic always is state aid and funding for education. Last year, we talked about the tax cap, our view of the cat tax cap. And last year, we talked about the implementation of the APPR, the relationship between contract negotiations, et cetera. But in any event, we, early on, you know, I think if we, if you let it go too long, it can be really hard to schedule lobbying efforts. So I just want to see if people want us to see if in the new year, our district clerk can schedule some dates to meet with Kevin Cahill, Terry Gibson.
To keep DeeDee Barrett.
And we did meet with DeeDee Barrett in Poughkeepsie. She covers part of our district last year, right?
Mm-hmm.
Have we done anyone else?
Yeah. No, those are, those are the three.
NISBA in the, in the, in the past has also had a lobby day in March. And there were a few years, and years back, where we went up to all the need-to-do lobby days. Those lobby days, then they, they started promoting, "Meet your legislator in your district." So lots of this did.
They kind of caught up with us.
People stopped, yeah, which we had done before they did. But then we stopped going to lobby day where you'd meet them again. So that could be out there, too, in March. But, but if people want to, then maybe after the first year, we should just get on trying to schedule those things, then we can discuss kind of the content of that. But this letter could be a portion of what we talk about. And maybe we'll even know specific pieces of legislation that we have a particular viewpoint on it that when we meet with them.
And I would just point out to the, to those who are, who are new to the, to the board, when we've gone to meet with, met with Senator Salander a number of times, and then the three newest ones last year, I mean, it's not necessary to take, for all seven of us to go. I mean, in fact, it's kind of overwhelming, I think, when, you know, when you, we all kind of jam into this office and half of us are standing because there's no place to sit. I mean, you know, Tom and I had gone in the past and, you know, two, maybe three board members. It's, I just want to let everybody know that that's, that's probably plenty and it may even be on the verge of too many people, depending on whose office you're going to. But we can, we can try to set that up right after the first of the year, especially as they start going back to, to work. I didn't really mean it that way. To work, yes, I did.
This is our longer theme this year.
So we'll, yeah, we'll try to set that up. I think sooner the better. The closer it gets to adopting a budget, the busier they get and they can't find the time to meet with us and.
Okay, great. We'll do it. Mark?
I'll just say that, you know, we found it more beneficial, especially for the new board members, to meet with the legislators in their own office here in the district rather than go up to a lobby day because we get more of their attention that way. If we go to the lobby day, we have to share the time with other school districts from the area, so.
Right, right. Yeah. And they see where their constituents really, right in their office, I think is effective. Okay. Any other items under old business? And we come to our second opportunity for public comment. Would any members of the public like to comment? Kelly?
I also want to thank our principals and our math teachers for the parent meeting. It was very important and I appreciate your time.
Great. Fantastic. Thanks. Any other member?
I love to say we're watching files.
All right, now we move on to our other. Anyone have any other, Lisa?
This is my first other. Tomorrow afternoon, starting at 3:30 in this very room, is going to be the Second Avenue Staff Craft Fair. And there are going to be seven exhibitors, and I'm one of them. Not that that's pertinent in any way, but, but I do encourage people to come and, you know, look and see what our staff members do when they're not giving their attention to our kids. I'm very much excited to look for them.
What time is that, Lisa?
3:30.
3:30 to 5:00.
6:30, actually.
Well, they did go a little bit.
Yeah, they go up to 6:30.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other items under other?
A lot of great stuff.
Okay, then we'll move on to our action items. Does anyone have anything to remove from the consent agenda? Therefore, we will then, may have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent items.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? I can't even. Do you want to vote? Okay, that's unanimous. That motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept two 2014 ExxonMobil Fuels Educational Alliance grants in the amount of $500 for Chancellor Livingston Elementary School and $500 for Rhinebeck High School for the maintenance and support in the areas of math and/or science through the sponsorship of Mr. Richard Mathies and Rhinebeck Mobile.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? It's an annual gift, I know, from Mr. Mathies, and it's very generous of him, and we appreciate that. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Mary Ann Bovee as clerk of the Board of Education for the 2013-14 school year, effective January 1, 2014, an annual stipend of $9,667 pro-rated.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Questions or comments? Donna, we're sorry, you're going. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the three-year probationary appointment of Jill Simmons to the position of elementary teacher, assigned to Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective January 2, 2014, in the tenure area of elementary at a salary of Step 1 MA plus 09, $57,240 pro-rated in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2013-14.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the three-year probationary appointment of Kristen Seacord to the position of elementary teacher, assigned to Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective January 2, 2014, in the tenure area of elementary, at a salary of Step 1 MA plus 6, $57,006 pro-rated in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2013-14.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Janet.
Ludich.
Ludich, as a long-term substitute in the position of elementary teacher at Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, at the pleasure of the board, effective honor about January 2, 2014 through June 26, 2014, at the salary of Step 1 MA plus 3, $56,772 pro-rated in accordance with the 2013-14 RTA salary schedule. This appointment is to fill the balance of the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Shannon Denise, elementary teacher at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? Seeing none? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the three-year probationary appointment of Michelle Fountain to the position of special education teacher, assigned to Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective January 2, 2014, in the tenure area of general special education at a salary of Step 1 MA plus 6, $57,006 pro-rated in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2013-14.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions?
Just one question. What, what is general special education as opposed to any other category?
The way the, the way the tenure areas are laid out by the, the great state of New York, general special education is for a student with, with a handicapped condition that's not called out as a special area. For example, a hearing impaired student, that's a, that is a special, special education tenure area. There are two or three others, and the general special education covers everything else. It's just the way the state parses it out. And I wouldn't be supposed to, to confer any kind of sense as to how they have many of these tenure areas parsed out. But that's the tenure area that falls into the work that she will be, she will be doing. So that's the one our attorneys tell us to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve 2012-13 budget transfers in accordance with the Board of Education Policy Number 6150 for the school year ending June 30, 2012.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions about that? Diane?
Do you mean school year ending 2012 or 2013?
These are full last year.
Full last year?
Yeah, it's 213.
It should be 13.
13.
Right, okay.
Yeah, that should be 13.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
Any other questions about that?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency condition substitute teachers and non-instructional staff for the 2013-14 school year.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint additional 2013-14 BMS after-school program instructors.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Teneille Morrissey to commence honor about May 31, 2014, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave for the period of disability certified by a physician in writing, to the extent per accrued sick leave, and thereafter such leave to be taken as unpaid childcare leave through the conclusion of the 2013-14 school year on June 26, 2014.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the employment history of a particular person.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Motion passes. We're moving into second session. Thank you.
Thank you.